Okay, are we good then?
Yeah, we're good.
All right, let's go ahead and get started. I'd like to welcome you to the City of Panol Planning Commission Regular Meeting. It's Monday, March 28th at 7:00 PM. We are still meeting via Zoom Video Conference due to the State of California's Declaration of Emergency. And we are holding this video conference pursuant to AB 361. The City Council actually is going back to hybrid meetings and our next commission meeting will be hybrid as well. Ways that you can watch this meeting. You can watch it live on Channel 26. You can access that via the city's website at www.cipanol.ca.us. And it is also being video streamed at that website. If none of these options are available to you or you need assistance with public comment, please contact David Hannam, who is the Planning Manager, at 510-724-8912 or D H A N H A M at cipanol.ca.us. You may participate in with a public comment. And you can do that via Zoom or the information is from a PC, Mac, or iPad, or iPhone, or Android. You can access that this by HTTPS hashtag or colon backslash backslash US zero two web dot zoom dot US backslash J backslash eight seven six three seven one four nine oh one oh. Or that is the webinar ID eight seven six three seven one four nine zero one zero at zoom.us/join. You may also access by phone at 1669 900 6833. Speakers are will be asked to provide their name. We'll get to that when we get to public comment. Any comments you can submit to planning staff during the meeting via email again D Hannam at cipanol.ca.us. Am I missing anything before we move to the call to order?
Nope.
Okay, then let's go ahead and call this meeting to order and we can recite the Pledge of Allegiance together. I pledge allegiance.
Allegiance.
And I'd also like to have a land acknowledgement. Before we begin, we'd like to acknowledge the Aloney people who are the traditional custodians of this land. We pay our respects to the Aloney elders, past, present, and future, who call this place Aloney Land, the land that Panol sits upon, their home. We are proud to continue their tradition of coming together and growing as a community. We thank the Aloney community for their stewardship and support, and we look forward to strengthening our ties as we continue our relationship of mutual respect and understanding. Mr. Hannam, could we have a roll call, please?
Sure. Commissioner Menes?
He's here.
Commissioner Martinez?
Here.
Commissioner Benzuli? He's absent, and he did notify me prior to the meeting. Commissioner Wong?
Yes.
Commissioner Current?
Here.
Vice Chair Moriarty?
Present.
Chair Ben Willows? Absent. We have five, we have members of the commission, so we can't act on any items if need to tonight, so.
Great. Thank you very much for that. So, under citizens to be heard, the public may address the Planning Commission on items that are within its jurisdiction and not otherwise listed on the agenda. Planning Commissioners may discuss the matter, but by state law, action must be deferred to a future meeting. The time allowed is five minutes each. Mr. Hannam, do we have any citizens to be heard?
I don't have any emails, and I'm checking with Justin if Justin has anybody on the phone with him.
No, there's no one on the line right now.
Perfect, okay. So we can move forward.
Okay. Then, in the future, you may submit comments to Mr. Hannam as following the directions that are on the screen right now. But let's go ahead and move to the meeting minutes. Do I have a motion regarding the minutes from our February 28th meeting?
Have a brief inquiry regarding the minutes before we move to a motion, if we could. Towards the end of the minutes, I believe on page six, line eight, it talks about Vice Chairperson Moriarty inquiring about the status of creating objective standards. And that Mr. Hannam anticipated information we presented to the Planning Commission at a meeting in March. So is there still a plan to present information to us on objective standards? Or is it just the parklets that's basically going to be the objective standard we're looking at?
Well, the parklets is just one, just one aspect of it of create when we create. Right now, we don't have the, we don't have parklets as part of our, as part of our plan. But if we do decide tonight that that's something that we want to do, then we would create objection, 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 objective standards for the creation of these, of these guidelines when we, when we put the parklet program together. So, yeah, I mean, it will be all of our, we'll be taking a look at all of our, all of our different zoning districts and everything in terms of development standards. Make sure we have objective standards, and those will be coming to you. I just wasn't able to get those to you this month. So I'm hoping, we're starting with parklets, but we'll be bringing things over the course of the next few meetings and for you guys to take a look at, so. And what we need, and to follow the next set of processes.
Okay, most of the stuff in the minutes, it just, I just figured it was various projects getting shuffled around at a time, but I was curious about that in particular, since I wasn't sure if there was a time constraint on objective standards or not.
Mr. Hannam, I do believe that there was an end of March time deadline to get objective standards to the state. And that was part of the discussion and the question especially relating to SB 9. But I'm not sure if discussing it during the minutes is the right place, if we can discuss that afterwards, is that?
Yeah, we can, yeah, we can discuss that later.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Menes, for bringing that up. And let's make sure that we do address this at the end of the meeting at right during the reports. So we can make sure that we're in complete, in complete understanding of where we are regarding those objective standards. Does anyone else have any other comments?
Other than I made it here finally.
Okay.
All right.
Thanks, sorry, because busy with work.
Hardly hear you, Tim.
What?
We, I can hardly hear you.
Oh, okay, let me see if I can tune it up.
Okay.
Okay, Chair Bonuelos, do you want to call for the approval of the minutes?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Barely, yeah, I mean, I can hear you, but it's, it's still relatively low.
Let me fiddle with this. Can you take care of this, Ann, while I fiddle with mine?
Yeah, I'll do that. If there are no other comments regarding the minutes from the February 28th meeting, could I entertain a motion to accept those minutes?
I'll make a motion, Dave, Dave Current, I will make a motion to approve the minutes.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that for you, Dave.
Thank you, Commissioner Martinez. Then, let's go ahead and have a roll call vote, I believe we need to.
Commissioner Menes?
Yes.
Commissioner Martinez?
Yes.
Commissioner Wong?
Yes.
Commissioner Current?
Yes.
Chair, Vice Chair Moriarty?
Yes.
Chair Bonuelos?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
I just want to confirm that Commissioner Wong was able to watch the meeting from last week so that he could approve these minutes.
That is correct, yeah, I did watch the, the, the video.
Excellent. Thank you so much for confirming that, Commissioner Wong. Chair Bonuelos, are you ready to go?
Well, trying, just go ahead and go forward here. Let's see. Okay, so, okay, the Planning Commission minutes. And we don't have any public hearings, no business, and we have new business, parklet design, discussion of concepts for parklet standards and design guidelines. So, David, go ahead.
Okay, thanks, thanks, Chair Bonuelos. Tonight, tonight, we were talking about parklet design. As, as you're aware, during the, with the current onset of the pandemic, the City Council adopted an emergency ordinance to allow our outdoor dining permits, which are pretty much with a temporary use permit, there's, there were approximately, there's actually 20 businesses, not 205, 20 businesses that took advantage of the temporary use permits. And there's currently about four or five that still have their, have their outdoor dining areas. The only one that really represents what a parklet is, is the one at Sues Cafe, right, right on the onset of Pear Street. All of the other, what we consider parklets are within parking lot, existing parking lots of, of those particular restaurants. Like in Mel's Diner, there was, it's in, it's in the parking lot. The Applebee's, it was in the parking lot, and Antlers, it's in the parking lot. Tina's is in the parking lot. So they're all necessarily in the park, in the, in the parking lots of the, of the, of the projects. When we talk about parklets, they are basically small sidewalk extensions of what we, what we know of parklets. Are that they're, they're small sidewalk extensions intended to provide amenities and green space recreational for the pub, to the public. Now, they usually are constructed encompass areas of one or more typical parking stalls. Hey, Dave, do you have my PowerPoint? Is that, is that ready to go? Can we go to that? Because I'm going to go to that. Perfect, okay. And kind of, kind of just jump ahead, that the city is in the beginning stages of developing parklet regulations, designing guidelines. Staffs identified several topic areas and examples of some considerations used in the parklet guidelines of other jurisdictions. We used probably about five, four or five jurisdictions that we took a look at. And we invite the commissioners for feedback on guidelines and standards they may desire to see in the future for parklet design within Panol in order to develop the park, parklet regulation and guidelines. So, we kind of, you know, kind of, we went over some categories in terms of the analysis consideration part of the discussion tonight, and looked at different amenities such as safety and aesthetics and cost and economic development. Staff has recommended the planning commission directly playing at Hawk Design Committee. Do work with staff on developing policies and guidelines for the parklets in the city of Panol. But if we can go to the next slide, Dave. So basically, again, what is a parklet? Parklets are small sidewalk extensions. They're usually constructed to encompass the area of a typical parking stall and, and are open to any member of the public. So when you do parklets, it's not like, okay, this parklet is for Tina's, and this one's for Bear Claw. This one's for, you know, they're, they're all, they're all for all the businesses that are within the area that they're using stall. They're basically, the purpose of community parks is to maximize the sense of community by utilizing the public space. So if we go to the next slide, Dave. And this is kind of an example. This is a diagonal, this is a diagonal with diagonal stalls. And kind of, you can kind of see how it is an extension. And this one's kind of labeled, that basically it should be a minimum of six foot clearance for the next closest parking stall. So it has distances between the next set of parking stalls. It, it, there, and it talks about having reflective posts, and we can get into that a little later. But I just kind of want to give you an idea of what, of what parklets are. If you go to the next slide, Dave. This is, this is, this is what we normally see. What you'll see is sort of the sidewalk, and you'll see the parklet along the sidewalk. And it, and it kind of has the street, the direction, it's always in the direction of travel. Cars and basically the lanes and in the parking areas. Well, we would normally be able to parallel park, that's where those areas would be. Okay, if you go to the next slide, Dave. So these are some of the, these are some of the barriers that are, are used to, to help protect. Because as, as you're aware, I mean, some of these, some of these parklets and some of the other communities are right, right out in the middle of the street. And there has to be some type of protection for those, for those that are sitting down, eating dinner, eating their meals, or just sitting congregating, you know, doing. And so these are different types of barriers that have been used in different, in difference, in different parklet areas over the past. You have the heavyweight barriers, which is your concrete, you know, typical K rail. You've got your plastic traffic barriers that are usually filled with something. Parking stops, wall wood barriers, granite or concrete, concrete blocks. And we're talking, these are like 250 pound blocks. So these aren't just your typical blocks you get at the, at the store. And of course, the planners, same type of thing. These are your, you know, your 250 pound, 300 pound planners that help outline the areas, outline the area of your parklet. So, and of course, lightweight barriers that are like using between the, the heavyweight barriers, either metal railing, some use plastic netting, some use rope. You can kind of see on the corner one, it kind of gets creative on different, different styles of what you can do, lattice, bamboo curtains. So there's, there's a lot of different, there's a lot of different samples and textures that you can use to, to make, to make these parklets. Go to the next slide, Dave. Okay, now this, now this, this, this is kind of where we're getting to kind of a standard. In most cases, you're, you have, it's, it's a continuation of the sidewalk. So what has to happen is the gap you see is for the drainage to be maintained. None of the, none of the parklets are just solid that butt up against the sidewalk. Usually it's a, it's a platform that's based, you can kind of see the ramps are kind of flush with the curb in the sidewalk. And, and that area below, that six inch by 12 inch, that's, that's usually a drainage area. So drainage can get underneath it, and it's not obstructed, and so it's reached out. And that's, and that's a sample from the San Francisco Parklet Manual, right out of their manual. So that's, that's what they require as part of, as part of the parklets. Okay, Dave, go to the next slide. Of course, it's kind of give you an example of what it is. So as you can see, in this area, where the edge of the sidewalk is, you can kind of see they've used some heavy planners on the edge, along with some wood barriers along the side. And, and of course, it's basically a parking stall. It's taking up probably, that's probably taking up two or three parking stalls along, along, along the street. If you go to the next slide, Dave. Here's some other examples of parklets using a diagonal, diagonal parking. You see the barrier, just have the little barriers with the reflective sticks to kind of let the public know we're there. As well as using, that's some more of a wood barrier. And kind of with some landscaping, kind of hides, kind of hides the people behind there, kind of protects them from, from, from vision for the cars and that. You can kind of see again on the bottom, same type of thing, they're using planners. They're using, you can kind of see the lattice or the, the, the baleen in between with some, with some, with some planners in between to, to just kind of offset. And again, to, again, is to get, get the people off the right away and into areas for their own recreational areas. If you go to the next slide? That one kind of got blurred. But yeah, this is another type of, type of parklet where you can kind of see, has a sign, which is a public parklet. And that's something that we would, that's something that we would regulate as well in terms of signage of what, what would be allowed there, on there. And of course, it just again shows kind of the wood and the, and the planners as well. If you go to the next slide? Okay, so in terms of regulations, these are the, these are some of the cities that we used, we used to take a look at, plant these regulations and guidelines. And I, I found it interesting that, you know, you can kind of see, you know, San Francisco, of course, it's a 64-page parklet program. It's got all the rules and regulations that you need. Contra Costa County is a 42-page parklet program. And then you have like the City of Alameda, it's just, it's a three-page program. Outlines what you can and can't do, and that's, and that's about it. Wallona Creek, more of a 21-page, and then Berkeley, Berkeley doesn't have really a separate, they didn't have a separate parklet program. They just created a chapter within the municipal code that covered parklets. So it's the same type of design standards and those. So if we go to the next page, Dave, I think that's the last one. Okay, if you could go back, go back a couple. I want to go back to, go back, okay. Yeah, I want to go back to that one. Because that one gives you a good example of what diagonal is, if we have diagonal parking, which I don't think we have any diagonal parking anywhere in downtown. All of ours is parallel or 90-degree parking or parallel with the street. So, which would be similar to the ones on the side. So, I mean, in terms of, in terms of guidelines, I mean, when analyzing, you know, let me take a look at just like the safety and traffic when we talk about reviewing parklets in other areas. They looked at speed limits, you know, working with the Public Works Department in terms of the safety concerns addressed by applicants. The use of parking, consider they generally cover one or more parking, or three or four angle spaces. You can kind of see this one takes usually two or three angle spaces. So also they use wheel stops. Now, these, these don't, but some would use, actually, you actually use wheel stops. Where the reflective, where the reflector banners are, they have some wheel stops there, some raised wheel stops. And it looks like on this one, on the diagonal, they don't have really any stoppage, they just have the, they just have the parklet, so. They looked at making sure that these parklets don't, don't obstruct impeding access to utilities or hydrants or drain inlets. So we need to make sure that when we're placing these, when we're placing these parklets, that we're not, we're not placing them, you know, in front of drain inlets or any of those things where our Public Works Department can't get into, or fire hydrants, where our fire department, they can't get to some of those, or it makes it harder to get to those utility accesses by having the parklet right there. Also, in terms of edge visibility, that's probably the, that is probably one of the most important. As you can see, the three reflectors that show that there's something there. And there's also reflectors on the wood side. You can kind of see those little spots of reflectors on the side. That's, that's very important to identify, especially in the, in the dark. Now, some communities have permanent, permanent type of, of parklets. Other communities have what they call portable, which means they lock them in. They basically, they pretty much lock them in like in the spring and summer, and they take them out during the fall and winter to create more parking throughout, throughout the downtown, usually for, for like, for, usually for Christmas or, you know, they have, they can acquire more parking for like the Christmas season. And then they bring them out in the spring and the summer, and they lock them, they have a place where they can lock them in. So, but most of them are permanent, but you can have quote portable parklets as well. They are, they have to be, they have to be ADA compliant, so they have to be ADA accessible. And we have to make sure the transition is flush with the curb. And you can kind of see on both of these how, how the one part of it comes up onto the curb. So I'm assuming there's a set, Dave, maybe if you go back to the next, go back one slide? Yeah, you can kind of see the continuation of the sidewalk and where, where that comes over and meets. And you can see the continuation of the sidewalk there. And of course, lighting, lighting will be very important. You know, some, some, some have those, those type of, the new lighting. But you can get like a Costco that have the little bulbs, and they light them around, they light them up a little bit. So again, they're, they're noticeable, you can see them. And of course, furniture. All of the furniture in most of the cities require the furniture be able to move out, move out and into as like a storage area or into, or they have, we have an agreement with the, with the businesses to, to, to move, move the, move the furniture in. Or you can basically screw them down, there's no, you know, and hope, and, and, and make kind of the bigger tables and heavier stuff, where you just can't just pick them up, it would take the whole three, four, five, six people to pick one up to, to take them away. So they should be weighted down. Let's see, what else? In terms of aesthetics, in terms of ways to bring value to parklet, they're talking about, you know, we've looked at, designs could include a bit of educational, such as landscaping, artwork, innovative architecture. As you can see on this one, Dave, go to the next slide. Again, yeah, you can kind of see the architecture in some of these, you know, they can look any way we want them to look. We can, so that's something that we can do as part of the, as part of acquiring the, excuse me, as part of that, as part of the aesthetics. And also to include some signage or make sure that the signage represents what we wanted to see, say, on the parklets. You know, parklet, you know, Main Street Avenue parklet, you know, something of that nature, San Pablo Avenue parklet, or, you know, something that identifies, identifies what it is. If we want to do like for business names, like sometimes some of them have, some of them have like on the ends, like on the ends on the wood one, they would have like little, little placards for like businesses that, you know, that could sponsor a parklet. That's another, that's another way of doing that, of getting some advertising that could actually sponsor and help, help the city build these things if we wanted to. And in some cases, you can kind of see the umbrellas, umbrellas. Some of them do have quote ceilings. And again, those are more of your, you know, more permanent parklets. As you can see, this one on the right-hand side on this, on this plane, for this plans, they don't have any, that's just a place where you can just sit down. They don't have any overhead or anything like that. But you can actually see the umbrellas, and I think the last, if you go back one slide, Dave, please? Thank you. No, that's just landscaping and trees. Most of them don't have roofs. You know, because most of them, you know, they're just, you know, they're, they, they can withstand the elements, so to speak. So, but some do, some, you can't have roofs. And you, and we can, we can, as part of guidelines, we can set the guideline or design standard if we, if we allow them to have roofs of what, of what those look like. So, in terms of costs, of some of these costs, most of the costs would be borne by the applicant who would want to propose, propose to have a parklet once the guidelines are established. We'd have application and user fees that would be developed with the program. And basically, what we would take a look at is city review, permit issuance or renewal fees, planning, public works, police, fire reviews. And then maintenance costs, consider requiring a maintenance plan briefly describing how the owner would maintain it. But even if the owner puts it in, it's not, it won't be, it's, it won't be just for that property owner. It would be for the, the public would be able to use that in most cases. So that's, that's kind of how that works. With that, that kind of, that pretty much ends, is my presentation. I mean, I'd like to get, I mean, I could go on much more in detail in terms of what other cities are doing. They all are pretty much the same in the sense that they all have requirements for what they look like. They all have standards, sizes, how much they, how many they, how many they use. And I think if this is something that we really want to dive into, I think if we get the ad hoc committee involved and, and really start developing guidelines for these, if, if this is something that the commission wants to proceed with and wants to move forward with, we can take a look at designs and where we can, where we can put parklets and, and all that. I mean, most of these, as you can see, they're kind of like in downtown areas. If you go to the next slide, Dave, again, I'm sorry. They don't look like they're on busy streets, but I mean, they could be. I mean, I don't, I'm not quite sure. I know the ones in Livermore, they're on a main track. They have those. I didn't, and I didn't get there, but that's, that's another cities that we can take a look at as well. So, you know, that's, so that's pretty much what I have for, for a brief outline and, and what we want to do with parklets. If you have any questions or anything, I'd be happy to answer those and, and we can move forward.
Okay, thanks, Dave. I think we will start with questions, and I'm going to start with Rafael. Any questions?
Rafael, you were picked by him.
Aha, I didn't have my audio turned up high enough to hear him. My apologies. So a couple points. First, can this presentation be uploaded to the city's website to go along with the agenda? Since I don't think it was part of the agenda packet.
Yeah, it will be.
And secondly, when I was looking around the internet to see what various other jurisdictions did, I found some parklet design guidelines that were released relatively recently, I think in January of 2022. But I've said a plus and pretty short document, just three pages worth of bullet points. And one of the points they had on platform design seemed like it was, their whole platform design segment seemed worthwhile. It was platform must be freestanding, can't make permanent alterations to the street. Their whole platform design segment seemed worthwhile. It was platform must be freestanding, can't make permanent alterations to the street. Don't pour concrete under the street, don't bolt platforms into the street. Platform can't emit drainage or stormwater, so there has to be a gap underneath the platform. And the platform should allow maintenance underneath the parklet through a modular design, removable screws or another method. To allow for leaf removal and the like. So I thought in particular, the. Design constraint to allow for maintenance is something that we should consider because there's definitely the potential issue. Especially with the more permanent parklets of, you know, how do we get at stuff that builds up under the parkway to make sure it stays clean?
Right.
That's all for now.
David, correct?
Yes, uh, thank you, Tim. Um, I'm a little bit confused on the ownership of the parklets because. Um, during the presentation, it appeared that the parklets were community parklets. That were available for anybody, but yet were, uh. Were telling the applicants that they have to bear the cost of the construction of the parklet. So. Uh, my question to the staff is, are these parklets, um. Dedicated to one business. Um, the one who pays for it, or can anyone use them? Like if there's like two restaurants and. Next to each other and one builds a parklet and the other one says, oh, yeah, we're going to use it too, without paying for it. Is that something that you envision? Uh, and also along the same line, um. It's real obvious how this works for restaurant businesses to have parklets. But do you envision any other businesses utilizing parklets like? A, uh, uh, you know, like an apparel, uh, business or art business or something like that?
Yeah, I mean, we, if they were, we would definitely have to, because that'd be outdoor displaying, outdoor, outdoor that. We would have to regulate that to make sure we, what they are able to put out in their parklet area. I mean, in most cases, in most cases, that, these are used for restaurants or gathering places. Um. And, and so. Usually when the businesses apply, usually it's a couple of businesses that go in together in, in a lot of cases. Um, where they go in, you know, like if there are a couple of restaurants near each other, they all go in. One, one will be the applicant, but they'll all go in and. And usually what will happen is as we process those, we will set up a maintenance plan with businesses that apply. Um, apply for those. Um, but in most cases, I, I don't think, um, you can. If you're using, if you're using the public right of way, you can't, you can't limit. Who can use it and who can't use it. But like I said, some people, some businesses, like they'll go in together and create one. Uh, as you can see, the one, like the one on the left hand, that's a pretty big parklet. I mean, that's taking up almost probably three or four parallel spots. I mean, that's almost, you know, forty feet, forty feet long. So, I mean, that, that can, that can cover a lot of businesses. Um, same with this one that on the bottom kind of store, you can, you can kind of see, I mean, it's a good, probably. Three, four, five spaces worth of parklet. And you can see there's, you know, a number of restaurants, excuse me, a number of restaurants that. That could use it. So, or a number of businesses that could, that, that would be able to use. In most cases, when we were talking about having parklets, most of them, most of the idea was that. Because like all the, uh, most of the, most of the parklets we have now, or what I call outdoor dining areas. Um, are all from restaurants. There isn't, there wasn't any from like a, you know, retail establishment or. Anything of that nature, which is purely eating. Uh, but not to say that they couldn't. There's a couple of retail shops wanted to put, get together and put one out there for, you know, gathering or, you know, that kind of stuff. Another, a similar area, they've done it in their own, but they've done it in their own area is the Safeway project. They created their own little. But I consider a parklet area that, because it created a gathering point, they created a spot within the development where people can just go and. And go and sit. And it's not just for one business, it's for all the businesses that are along that strip, that strip area. That's how most of these are envisioned. When you're, when you're doing this, you're envisioning that people can. You know, there's three or four, five, six tables in there and people can go and sit down and, you know, and read or do whatever they really want to eat, you know, it's. So it's, it's really for the community, uh, as well as the individual businesses.
Okay, I, I, I think the water is very muddy, uh, there. I, you know, I kind of, I kind of envisioned that, you know, during the pandemic. That there was a real need for parklets because, uh, of the fact that, uh, you know, we had restrictions about going into restaurants. And other places of businesses, you know, because of, uh, uh, and wearing masks and, and COVID. Uh, but it seems to me like, um. You, you, you know, cause as you, you point out, the right of way belongs to the public. But yet we're charging people to build them, which can be utilized by other businesses. And I think that's kind of. Something that, um, I don't think the builders of parklets really appreciate. Um, and, um, I'm beginning to think that maybe this is an idea that was great during the pandemic, but. It's, um, it, uh, use, uh, kind of diminishes, uh. Um, as we move, hopefully move from the pandemic, especially when it's on public streets. I can still see that these would be great in. Where there's, um, part, you know, in, in a private parking lots or something like that to have them. Uh, but I'm, I'm kind of leaning towards maybe this is an idea that was important the last two years. But creates a can of worms as we go forward. Um, and that's just my thought there. Um. The other questions I have is like, I know La Familia, you had a parklet out, out in front of it. That it was removed. I think the owner said that the city made him take it down. Can you elaborate on why the, that little parklet in front of La Familia, uh, is no longer there?
Well, that was, that they, while it was an outdoor dining, they wanted to do. It was a combination of things. One is that they wanted to do an outdoor, they wanted to do a temporary outdoor dining area during the pandemic. And so we allowed them based on, based on their sub- submittal, which was very, very limited in terms of what we required in terms of submittals. I mean, it was just pretty much give me a drawing and where you're locating it and, and you can pretty much have it. What they were trying to do is do a permanent one, in which case they were going to have to. Uh, they were going to have to go through the outdoor dining permit process and, um. And, and, um, and go through that conditional use process. They wanted to sell alcohol out there. So it was a more drawn out, it was a, it was more of, they were going to have to go through the formal process. And that's where they kind of, just they kind of backed off of it a little bit. Uh, we never told them that they could, they, they had to. Get rid of their temporary one. They could use their, their temporary ones are still allowable. Based on our, based on our emergency ordinance that we have with the city. That hasn't been, that hasn't been. We haven't gone out and started telling, telling people that it's over, that temporary part's over. If you want to use these, you can become permanent. Uh, there are a couple of businesses that are looking to make theirs permanent. In which case then, at this point, we really don't have any design guidelines. We would have to just do design reviews. And, uh, and, 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 and go with that route. So. And I also want to, I also want to make clear what they have, what we have in the, in the parking lots. I don't, I don't consider those parklets. Those are individual outdoor dining areas for individual businesses. That, that's what those were. Those, those aren't, those aren't what like parklets are usually used for. Um, so. So they're, they're a little different in that regard. I, I, at least I see there's a difference. And the, in what they're doing in terms of outdoor dining as compared to what a parklet is. Because usually the, the outdoor dining is on their private property. It's with their own, you know, on their own. Right with their business. Um. And so that's kind of where with the parklet, it's more open to the public. Um, and not just the restaurants. Um, not to say that the restaurants wouldn't use them. It, you know, I mean, the, the restaurants aren't open twenty-four hours a day. They're not open, you know, they're closed usually on Mondays and Tuesdays and Sundays and Mondays. And so they would be utilized by the public, but they also would be utilized by the restaurants when the restaurants are open and people are going out there and, and using them, yes. So that's what I mean by, but they have the ability to be used by the public as well.
Yeah, and I, and I see sort of, um, a contradiction there because we're requiring, requiring an applicant. To bear the cost and the maintenance, but yet it remains as, um, public, uh. A, a, a public space. And I just kind of wondered that, you know, if we're going to look at parklets, um. I think it should be for the community and with the cost borne by the city and maintained by the city. As opposed to this being a way of business to be able to expand, uh, the space of their business. Um, with, at a minimal cost. Uh, while taking away, uh, you know, uh, you know, by, by taking away a public space, i.e. parking lots. Um, so, um, I'm kind of leaning right now, as you probably got, you know, gathered that I think it's a good idea to develop. Uh, parklets, but I don't think that it should be identified, the cost should be borne by any individual business. If it's going to be a community's, uh, spot. Um, and just one last thing before I go. When I was looking at the, um, um. You know, the, um, street safety about roadways with twenty-five mile per hour's, uh, mi- uh, miles speed limit. Um, I'm kind of wondering if we should say or routes of regional significance, because specifically I'm looking at San Pablo Avenue. Which is a heavy commute area where unfortunately a lot of people are going faster than twenty-five through our, our city, even though we, you know, it's a speed limit. Um, I wonder if we should restrict, uh, uh, the parklets on, uh, roads of regional significance. Significance as well as the twenty-five mile an hour, twenty-five mile an hour speed limit. Uh, just because I, I know that there have been instances where cars have run into parklets with, with great injury and even deaths. Um, and, um, I think we should, you know, envision them like, like Sue's place where they're not on a main road.
Right.
Um, as opposed to being on a, a road like San Pablo Avenue.
Right.
So those are my comments. Um. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, David. Um, Frankie?
Thank you, Chair. Um. The items I have for you, Dave, are along the lines of, of what Raphael was discussing earlier. On the long-term maintenance. And so the angle that I'm looking at this from is if we have. Let's say, um, the business owner or the city, whoever it's going to be. Installs a parklet and then all of a sudden we find out that PG&E needs to get into it or EBMUD or. A- any other, you know, Verizon, AT&amp;T, fiber optics in those streets.
Right.
Um, we should probably, I would think it would be, if we're entertaining this, I think it might be a good idea to put in some, um. Guidelines that say in the event of, and said entity needs to, um, work in this area. Please understand that we've got to have the right to remove that, um, that infrastructure so that. Whichever party needs to get in there, whether it be for ten days, thirty days, three months, that we give ourselves an out option, um, to address that. Okay, yeah. Make sure to include that language?
Yeah, that's definitely, as, as, I mean, I'm hoping that the commission recommends this go to the ad hoc committee and we can get more in detail and depth. In, in what, in what these things would look like and how, because, yeah, you can't, you, you really. Um, you have to be very careful where you place them because of all of the different public utilities that are all over the place besides the drain inlets and the. The storm drain, this, just the storm drain getting from the, the water from one point, you know, you don't want it to stop at one and have to, you know, go around. Uh, and, and all that. So, yeah, there, so that's why there's, they try, they, in most cases. Like in these, I mean, you, you can see they've kind of taken up almost three parking spaces. These are pretty big. I mean.
Right.
Some of the other cities just require one parking stall. So that's a nine by eighteen. So eighteen feet by nine. So, you know, in our case, or nine by twenty, in our case, a hundred eighty square feet. So that if they're placed correctly, you won't have those issues. And they have, they need to be raised up. As you can kind of see. On all of them, they, they're sitting on some type of platform or, or they're up above the curb. Uh, where, you know, drainage can get underneath there. And of course, yeah, they're going to have to be, I'm sure there's going to have to be some cleaning under there and. Being able to, um, uh, to, to get under there to clean. I mean, you're going to have to.
Right.
Things will gather under there, garbage and all sorts of stuff, so.
Right. It's just my angle on that was just that long-term maintenance.
Yeah.
Of somebody like a PG&E or an EBMUD or somebody that, you know, for some reason they have a pipe break and we've got to take that whole infrastructure down for three months or six months.
Yeah.
Um, as long as we have language in there to address that. Um, the second part is the beautification. So if we could come up with a. Um, a standardized way of addressing. Um, I like some of the softer, trying to soften it up and add a little bit more detail. Instead of just looking at the wooden barriers that we've seen in other cities.
Yeah.
Um, if we can saw, just add a requirement in there that they do need to add some type of beautification, whether it be plants, trees, whatever they want to do. Um, but that would be, um, rather important. Um, and then the last one is the business costs. When we look at the square footage of what it takes for a business to have their business, whether it's an old town or, or anywhere else. The fact that we're allowing them to add four or five more tables, in my opinion, they should be willing to bear the cost for that. And if that's shared with the city and all of us get to use it, even better. But they know as well as we know, those of us. Um, when you have any business that just every square foot is another square foot, you can add another table, three more tables, four more tables. And when you average that out annually, that's significant, that's a pretty significant cost, which is why. When we look at cities like Walnut Creek or San Francisco, they immediately move to that model. To open up and give them additional ways to expand their business. So I think that could be a great way for us to increase our sales tax and. Um, give our businesses a better chance of success as well. Um, so those would be the comments I have at this time. Thank you. Chair Tim.
I also wanted to mention that, um, Commissioner Wong had to leave, so he left about seven thirty or so. If you guys needed to know that. Um, so, uh, anyway, um, Anne?
Yeah, thank you. Um, I, I'm, I'm curious why this came up. Um, we don't, we don't have a huge need for this. If we have one at this current point, um, Sue's Place being that example. I'm wondering, did we just want to get ahead of it? Um, where in the city, where would, would we see? Parklets, um, being developed?
Well, in most cases, there are some of the, there are some of the ones that have the, well, the temporary ones that want to create permanent. That want to create permanent places where people can eat outdoors and, and that in the public, in the public parking lots. Not so much on the street so much. I mean, um, and so, but in terms of order, in, in terms of making sure that. There are some that do want to come out onto the street, that we've got guidelines and, and regulations so that if and when we. We either allow them to go on, in, into parking lots or on the streets. We can consider them parklets or maybe just outdoor dining areas. Um, you know, uh. So that's kind of what, and there was, there, there's been kind of a push in more creating a destination in the downtown. And so as, as a part of that, sometimes parklets add to that ambiance in terms of. You know, people being able to gather downtown and, and, uh, and that type of stuff. So there's, there's been a number of different things of why it's, it's coming up and it surfaces. The majority of it has been the outdoor dining area, outdoor dining areas of getting them out of parking lots and, and kind of out where they, you know. And, and because it takes on the on-street parking, it says on the off-street parking. Um, it's. It's just one of those, it's just one of the things. Or if we do allow them to be in parking lots, that they've got rule and regulations that they can. That they have to follow to, to make sure that we can, you know, get them, what, we, we can get the people parked and we can. Uh, create dining experiences or experiences for residents and visitors alike, so.
Okay, so if we're thinking downtown, we're thinking old town. Um, it was brought up, Sue's Place, you know, that's the one option. Um. I mean, could, for instance, Tinas put one on tenant? Um, you know, or, or Antlers? I mean, uh, those are, are those, um, public parking spaces? That are behind both of those establishments, Antlers and Tinas?
I want to say Ant, Tinas is, I think there is public parking back there. Antlers, I think the parking is necessarily for the business. Businesses that are all in Long San Pablo, at least on the one side. Uh, so I do think the parking. It might, it's not necessarily public parking, but it's parking for multiple businesses within that area.
Okay, so, so we're dealing, we're, we're talking about a real small number of potential. Places where parklets would be developed, right?
Well, I mean, you could, you could develop a parklet on, by, down by La Familia, you could, uh, out on the road, you can, I mean, if.
Wait, 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 wait. By La Familia? That's on San Pablo?
Yeah, I mean, if we don't allow them on San Pablo, I mean, if we don't allow them on San Pablo, we can also, there are. we can also, there are, there could be some side streets that aren't necessarily in the downtown that could be able to be used. Uh, that's for some of these restaurants to use or just want to use other places.
I guess I'm just struggling with, um, what the need is, um, just thinking about what the, the specific. I mean, it seems like there's a whole lot of development and such like that going on right now that's, um, taken up a whole lot of time and for us to spend time on developing a set of regulations for some, uh, a need that exists for maybe one or two options. I'm, I'm kind of struggling with that. I mean, I don't mind getting out ahead of the game and, you know, that would be great, but I just see the opportunities for us actually using a regulation like this being very minimal. Um, and we have one at this point that is, that would be considered a, uh, or maybe two, if you consider Tina's being in a, uh, in a parking lot. So, um.
Well, like right now, Antlers is in a parking lot, uh, Mel's is in a parking lot.
You said that was a private parking lot.
Right. But what I'm saying is they're in, they're in parking lots. They're taking up off-street. They're taking up mandatory parking where other, other people are having to park somewhere else because these areas, these areas are being used for other uses besides parking. So.
Right. But that would be a, that would be a thing of you either have it or you don't because the only other option for the Antlers would be on San Pablo Avenue or on tenant and tenant's really squishy right there. I can't see how, how we'd be able to fit anything in. Is that true?
Yeah. I mean, I mean, they, I mean, if we're, if we're not using, if we're saying that San Pablo is out, we're saying that we can't use San Pablo for, for any of this, then yeah, in some areas we're limited in terms of where we're at. However, I always say however, there could be areas that do pop up and, and, and I think that this just gives the city another, it gives the city another, um, avenue for businesses that, that don't have a lot of square footage inside. Uh, and that has, that gives them another avenue to expand their, their businesses outside and to create, again, as part of the economic development package in terms of creating that destination, in terms of that, it gives the city at least some, a mobility and gives them the ability to approve these things. Uh, because right now like we don't, we have nothing, we have nothing in our code that would allow us that had dictate guidelines or objective standards for any of these types of, any of these types of, um, so all of our, all of our conditions, all of our requirements would be subjective, not objective. So if they'd be proposed, or they're just not allowed, we just don't allow. And, and once, once the, once the temporary order is up, that everybody who has them, they're gone.
Okay. So outdoor, outdoor dining, from what I understood you saying earlier about La Familia is that setting up an outdoor dining is different than setting up a parklet on a public, right?
Yes.
So, so those would be dealt with under a different part of the code. Um, I'm thinking what, um, Commissioner Current brought up as far as routes of regional significance and
Right.
you know, having, I mean, I would love to have any way to slow down traffic on San Pablo Avenue to 25 miles an hour, but I mean, realistically, that's not going to happen even through our best, you know, little downtown area. I mean, if we could, if we could do that, you know, on our little old town bit of San Pablo Avenue, but it's, at this point, it's really not safe. So I guess I'm, I'm just questioning the importance of it. I really appreciate the, the, you know, the thoughts about getting out ahead. Um, the one that we do see is, um, Sue's Place. And from what I understand, then if that is also since inside a public right of way, when, when they're not using that space, I can just go ahead and go in there and set up my chair and sit in there myself.
What, what they have right now, there's no guidelines for it right now. They, they, what, what they have right there is existing. It was temporary. So if they were to apply for one, we would have to go through a whole different design standard and that, but yes. If, I mean, they're only open from 10 to 2, right? So if they're not open and that area is available, yeah, you can go down, sit down, read, do whatever you need to do because it's not being used by the particular restaurant that's there.
Okay. All right. So anyway, um, I appreciate that. I think, you know, I think sending it on to, you know, the ad hoc committee, I just don't want to see us wasting a whole lot of time on, on something that's not going to be as important for our community. Um, I think it has been a pandemic-related thing and actually in some communities, it's ended up being a real positive thing. And so, you know, I can understand that, but I just don't see it happening as much in Pinole and I don't know if that's just because I'm not, you know, looking for the, the optimistic, positive things or if I'm just being realistic in that. So, um, you know, let's go ahead, send it to the ad hoc review committee and then I'll continue to whine and moan there. Okay. Chair Bonwylis, I'm done.
Okay. Thanks. Adam?
Adam's option.
Oh, is he? Oh, I didn't know that. Okay. Uh, it leaves me. I have a lot of questions and comments on here. Um, the first thing I wanted to talk about was what Dave Current mentioned earlier about, you know, your comment about it being for all the businesses. And I really think if you set it up that way, you're not going to get any because, um, you look at the parklets that you see in Berkeley and in Oakland and in San Francisco and, and Walnut Creek, they're put together by the, out in front of the restaurants that, that people are, you know, they're those are the ones that, to put them out there. Um, some of these parklets have kind of a lot of different forms. You know, we have the, the ones that you normally see. In Walnut Creek, they blocked off entire cross streets. And then out there, that's kind of like a, you know, everyone gets to use it kind of thing, but they, they had to use a whole street to do it.
Right.
Um, so I can see that as that. I'm kind of, kind of wondering what your definition of a parklet is because what you're describing and what they seem to be seem to me be two different things. Um, I don't see this as anything other than for restaurants. Um, there might be, you know, the occasional someone who, you know, drags their stuff out there to sell, but you know, they can do that on the sidewalk. You know, I think it's of, um, in Point Richmond, there used to be an antique store uh, in the old firehouse that they'd drag their stuff out on the sidewalk and that was a kind of a little event there for them, you know, and it kind of attracted people to their business. Um.
Well, like if you look at this parklot, parklet is diagonal. I mean, it's not, it's really set up more for people to sit than it is for people.
Yeah. To me, that's not usable for business. That's just, you're just, that's just extra seating. So to me, that's not a park, that's just, that's just miscellaneous seating. Um, I guess, I guess what I'm thinking about is the, the reason why this occurred is, you know, during the pandemic, people needed their restaurants open and they needed to have open air. And so, you know, they came up with this idea to have it out, you know, probably first on the sidewalk and then in the street. And the thing about that was people like eating outside. That's what's kind of perpetuated this. Um, so the, um, and right now we don't have that many, but it's kind of one of these things where, you know, if you build it, they'll come. Because I think if people know they could do it, they may be interested in doing it. Um, so I think, I think that's why we don't see it. It's because just people haven't really thought about it. Maybe they didn't know they could. Um, and in our case, it, it may not be just, you know, downtown or, or wherever, you know, I can see them, people trying to do this like in the shopping centers on Fitzgerald, you know, there's enough, uh, little places to eat up there and whatnot where, um, they could do it out there in their sidewalks. That's going to be a whole other thing because they'd have to get the, the permission of the people who run those shopping centers to allow it. And, you know, sometimes they won't, I wouldn't, I don't know if they'd go for it really, uh, just because they're, you know, funny that way. Um, what I've seen, and I've, you know, seen a lot of these and, and, uh, this is something that's happening not in the architectural world where people are talking about, you know, how to make parklets not look like shanty towns. If you're, I, I was recently up in North Beach in San Francisco and you know how that, you know, there's a restaurant in every rental space on the streets there.
Right.
But, but they built parklets in front of them. It, it looks like someone's waiting for the garbage to get hauled away. You know, they're, they're, they're really, really look like they're about to fall apart and they lose the identity of the restaurants because they're just a bunch of shacks going on for blocks and blocks. So to me, that's kind of like parklets gone wild. But, um, and I, and that's why I was kind of thinking that maybe should have be some sort of a minimal amount of regulation on, on how they look and, and maybe how big they are. Um, but I really don't see this going for anything other than restaurants. Um, which makes me think of a few things and we mentioned some of them already tonight. One of the first things, the thing that, the thing that was interesting about a lot of the parklets, I think of one in particular in Berkeley, right in front of the UC campus or about a block away from UC campus where, you know, it's, it's really a bar with, with a restaurant, not a restaurant with a bar. So you're drinking alcohol out in the street where a lot of cities, you know, don't allow that. Um, I was at one, like a little mixer thing in Oakland, in downtown Oakland, where it's kind of was the, the park that was kind of like a straight version of your diagonal thing on, in your picture, but it was out in front of one particular bar. It was theirs. They put it up there and I guess they got some okay for the city to let them to do it and they put it up there. Um, I don't think you're going to, you know, do, I kind of agree with, um, Dave Current. If you expect these things to be shared, the city's going to have to do them, which means they won't happen. And, um, but if there are people that want to put them up and they're willing to pay for it, I think it should be exclusively for them. Uh, otherwise, you know, you're not going to get anyone that's going to want to do it. Uh, let's see. So anyway, I kind of lost my point there in terms of, do we have to have some kind of thing for, to allow alcohol drinking in the street? If you have it, the parklets. Well, well, if you keep them, if you keep them only as, because in, in most of our furnaces, like in the downtown, like in Tina's, you can only have it in one parking stall. So we would be able to regulate that. If, if Tina's was, if Tina was, if Tina's wanted to do one, let's just say on San Pablo, let's just say I'll just put it on San Pablo and they wanted to, and they, and they wanted to do one and as their own, then yeah, then they would have guidelines. They would have guidelines that they would have to go by and yeah, they would have to adhere to, uh, ABC laws as well. Uh, if they were to serve alcohol outside. So have all these cities gotten around all those ABC laws? Cause there are a lot of cities with a lot of bars with parklets out in front of them. Um, a lot of them, what they've done is they either, the cities have allowed individual businesses to own these, own these parklets. And so they've had to take the, they've had to take the liability and, and they have, they, they're from the city as well. They'd have to indemnify the city, um, because it's on city right of way pretty much. There, it's on the street. So there'd be a lot of indemnification agreements and, and maybe Alex, I see Alex.
Yeah. So, so, um, thanks, thanks Chair, um, and thanks Dave. ABC also has modified its, its regulations pretty significantly since COVID began to allow, um, more flexibility for outdoor, um, drinking, uh, you know, consumption for lack of a better word, similar to how they now allow, you know, to go, you to buy to-go drinks. Uh, they've modified it somewhat for, um, parklets that have, you know, my understanding of regulations is they need to have, they need to be somewhat self-contained, um, you know, to have some sort of a, um, barrier between the street and where the alcohol, but certainly what our regulations would, would simply, um, state is that they, you know, must comply with ABC regulations and, you know, if they're going to serve alcohol, they need to comply with the ABC license rules, which, which may change over time and it may get stricter over time. Um, I, I would note that part of our municipal code does prohibit the consumption of alcohol anywhere that's visible in public. So, um, as part of this process, we may have, um, either the council, you know, modify that section or simply, you know, adopt a resolution clarifying that this, you know, as long as the alcohol consumption is occurring in the parklet um, and not on the sidewalk or outside of the parklet, you know, it doesn't violate that, that provision.
Think that, uh, well, you, well, you probably know that the, the rules that ABC has modified in order to allow them, is that just temporary? Is that just only during?
So, so it, it was originally emergency rules and then the legislature passed the law extending it. Um, for, I, I think another year through 2022. Um, I don't know if, you know, if they will do that again. Um, there are ways to have drinking outdoors on, on patios, even under normal times. I'm sure some of you have seen outdoor patios where you see the signs that say, you know, no alcohol behind this, beyond this line or beyond this, uh, gate. Um, so there may be a way to modify, especially for those businesses that are perhaps in the parking lot or something like that, for them to per, put up a fence or do something that allows them even under normal ABC rules to, um, serve alcohol in that space.
Okay. Yeah. Um, obviously these, this could, this can turn into a multitude of regulating, it seems like. Um, and it's actually, some of this is kind of beyond the planning commission, I believe. I think we should be thinking more of, because some of this is going to be helped, have decided by the council. Um, but in terms of land use, um, and, and the, I think the, the definition of the guidelines that, that David is talking about, um, I think our purview on this would be, you know, considering if we have to decide on a maximum size, whether we can cover them with a, you know, like some kind of little roof on them like you see in other places. Uh, are they going to allow signage to identify the, the, the business? Um, is there anything going to be lighting requirements? Um, you know, the things like ADA and, and drainage, that can, that's kind of like a foregone conclusion. Um, but that would, that would have to be, there'd have to be some kind of, uh, verbiage about that though, just, just so you have it. Cause you know, you don't, you know, just for both of those things. So I think we have to kind of make sure that we're, you know, talking about the rights, right stuff and make sure that we're sending the things that have to be decided by the council to the council, you know, so there's more
Right.
more serious legalese is a council matter, not a planning commission matter.
No, I mean, they would, they would all have to be approved by the council. I mean, we would be making recommendations to the council for approval.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah. Yeah. But the, but the, the things that we should be talking about, I think are the actual impacts of use as opposed to, you know, can I, can I have a couple of beers in the street? I mean, it's probably going to happen if you have one of these, you know, until someone, you know, tells you you can't. Um, I thought the idea of about, you know, uh, San Pablo Avenue, having them, not having them there or restricting them there. Um, they're a good, I think there's just some, some, um, something to that, but, um, I kind of wonder if, whether that's where you'd have, you know, there might be more of a, a wish to have some there. Um, you know, what if, uh, you know, we, we allowed us, East Bay Coffee wants something there, you know, what are they going to do? Um, any other businesses that may come along, uh, well, Tina's would have hers in back like she did before, before it blew away, but, um, I, I am not sure whether it would be, if we allowed this, whether, and we restricted that, whether that would, you know, do anything, um, in terms of, uh, having it. I mean, that, other than the, of course, the the traffic, I mean, the, um, having it out there, it seems like a, a place to do it. Um, there's always been some back and forth about, um, traffic calming and, and things like that over the years. I think, David, we went through at least two different versions of that in our planning commission time and, um, uh, it's just never gone anywhere mainly because the businesses didn't want it to happen because it affected loading and things like that, which may be a thing that may come up. You know, if we allow parklets, are we constricting the streets down? So businesses that require loading from, from whatever street they're on, now are blocking traffic. Um, I, I can't say whether I've ever seen that happening in, in other cities. I've certainly seen parks on streets with busier city, bigger, more consistent traffic than we have downtown. Um, but, um, you know, I just don't know. Most of the parklets I've seen are kind of side streets. Um, at least the ones I've been at, have been more like side streets or, uh, quieted down versions of main, main areas, you know, um. So I think of those, those, the ones, several of the ones I've been in and one I go to all the time, you know, in Berkeley. So, um, I do think this would be a good thing for us to kind of look at in terms of, you know, the ad hoc committee. So, um, I do think this would be a good thing for us to kind of look at in terms of, you know, the ad hoc committee. And maybe we can, uh, kind of come up with a group of. Guidelines that would pretty much kind of cover the majority, you know, pretty much the majority of, of what people would want. And have a mechanism for something comes up that, uh, we didn't think of. David, what right now, say if I had a restaurant on the street and I wanted to put. Tables out on the sidewalk right in front of my restaurant, what would be the process for doing that? Do I need to get a use permit for that or is there?
Yeah, you'd have to get an outdoor dining permit and then, um. But I don't think our sidewalks are, um.
Well, I, I take, not taking into account how wide our sidewalks are.
You need, you need an outdoor, you need an outdoor dining permit. And then if you were, if, if alcohol were to be involved, you'd have to get a public convenience necessity letter. Approval from the council as well as a conditional use permit. That's what we had to do for East Bay Coffee for their outside area on the side.
Oh, yeah, okay. So, um, if we had. A, a mechanism for parklets, would we have to do the same thing?
Yeah, we would all, we'd do it under all one. Like, we would do like a, being on the sides, we would do a design review. Uh, for that and then a CUP and a, uh, and then a PCN.
Cause I was thinking, I was thinking that, you know, like when, when the council approves a restaurant that's, or, or it has alcohol. There's, there, it's a two-step process. It's first, there's the ABC approval and then there's the actual. Final approval or everything. It's always seems like it's being done in two pieces.
Yeah, just because of the public convenient necessity letter, that has to be done by the council.
Yeah.
And once they approve that, then we can bring the conditional use permit back to the planning commission for their approval.
Okay, so I guess, um. When, when I think of these things, it always one of these things where it sounds like it's a great idea. But then someone gets in, tries to go do it and find out it's like, you have to hire an attorney just to get your, your chairs out on the sidewalk. So I've gotta feel, figure some way to, if we're gonna do this, let's not make it so. Encumbering of rules that people don't wanna do it, it's, and then the rules mean money. And it's just a massive fee onto this, you know, I, I don't, I can understand having some minor fees for, for doing it, you know, cause. You know, there's just gonna be some city time involved, but. It's very easy for these kind of things to kind of even get prohibitive, even after you spend the time trying to figure it out. But you put so many rules on it that you make it almost impossible to do. So I think I wanna, you know, impress on everyone, if we do do something like this. It's gotta be straightforward and, and as simple as possible and, uh, otherwise, you know, we're not gonna get them. And, um. If that's, if that's our desire to have something like that, I mean, it's, it's fun to sit outside in the street. I like, I liked that area right in the middle of downtown Walnut Creek where they closed off about a block of, of Cross Street. And it's kind of like, now that's a place where it looks, seemed like it's open seating. There's a whole bunch of restaurants there and everybody can sit wherever they feel like it, you know.
Right.
And it has this whole kind of street fair kind of feel to it, which is kind of nice, you know, it's. You know, that's kind of like how they did it. Um, other places have them, you know. Each, each entity does their own thing in front of their place and, and they paid for it and they paid whatever permits they did and they put the money in to build whatever. Structures they have and, and whatnot. And so, um, there, there is kind of a. Um, I don't know if I want to say organic feel to it, but some sort of semi-traditional feel. To having these things that I think that's what people kind of attract themselves to. Um, the, so, um, I would like to see this go through the ad hoc committee and see, you know, take it for a spin, see what happens. I'd be curious to poll. Um, some of the local businesses and see, hey, if we had this, would you do it? You know, just.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's something that, that's, that's something that we can take, we can talk about because I mean, I'm, I'm taking a look at from a regulatory standpoint. A lot of the cities and counties are going in totally different directions, like San, the city of San Jose, which is fairly big city, has a three-page. Parklet regulations, you know, and, you know, a city of, you know, size of us, of, you know, forty, thirty thousand. Uh, you know, has a forty-two page requirement or thirty-two, forty-two.
Yeah, you can't have that.
Yeah, so I mean, so.
It's gotta be, it's gotta be like a pamphlet.
Yeah, I mean, it's got, you know, there's a lot of different, I, I mean, all the cities are different in how they regulate this and so. I mean, and that's one thing I would take to the ad hoc committee as well is, is take a look at some of these different, different cities and what they're requiring and, and that. And, and that's something, I, and I do think that's what the ad hoc committee is for. I think that's, you know, is to ferret out some of these ideas to make sure, you know. If it's something that we really wanna do, is it something that, you know, we can, you know, and then move forward and, um. So, and, and, uh, parklets, I mean, like I said, it, it was inspired by, it was inspired by the. The COVID nineteen, but there are areas like, for example, Bearclaw. Bearclaw really doesn't have anywhere in, in, they have a little side area that they try to do an outboard, but it, it didn't fit. There wasn't enough room on that alley side, you know, they could, they would benefit from something like that. Um, so I mean, there are some businesses that are entrenched in there. Uh, there might be some businesses that what I call the horseshoe, you know, that restaurants that might be able to wanna take advantage of that or. You know, or, you know, or if, if and when there's a redevelopment of the area, who knows? And I think that, I think this is just another amenity that the city might be able to offer with a short, with a, with a fairly, with a fairly. You know, decent sized regulation, th- this is something you wanna do, that we have that, we have, it's another tool, it's another tool in our toolbox. Uh, for economic development and that. And so that's kind of, and that's kind of where, from staff's perspective is, that's kind of where we're coming from, is to have another tool in the toolbox. So that we can incorporate, that we can, you know, attract maybe some small businesses. Maybe there are some other restaurants. We've gotten inquiries from brew pubs and wine tasting places and so, you know, they're, you know, so we are getting those inquiries. And, you know, again, it's just, if they have, if we have something like this and it's regulated and it's, and it's done properly and. You know, I think it'd be an asset. So I mean, that's kind of where, and of course, COVID did spark it. I mean, it did, and, and. And some of the businesses that haven't done it were surprised in how people liked it when they were there. So, and they wanna continue it. So, um, so I think that was another, that's another issue as well, so.
Yeah, I mean, I, I could, I can easily see somewhere like, uh, parachute bistro wanting something like that, you know.
Yeah.
And it being, you know, for them being successful.
Yeah.
So, um. So I, I do think it's something we should bring to the ad hoc committee and, you know, see if we can figure, see if we can figure it out. See where we go from that, so, so I'd be all for that.
Alex, I have one question for you on this. And that, in some of these parklets or what we have, I'll just call them outdoor, in the private parking lots. Would we consider those park, necessarily parklets or would we consider just those? Or as, as, as to, uh, regulate those as similar to parklets or? Does parklets remain more on the public ri, in the public right of way than in the?
Well, a parklet can be whatever we, we.
Define it.
Define it as, so we got different, different regulations for people in parking. Or.
Okay.
Park not or not, um, but we would need to adopt something for them to do that because. Those are, like you mentioned, those are required parking spaces.
Right.
And it doesn't conform with our current code for them to have a permanent, you know, presence in the parking lot. So we would need to address something to handle that, but if, you know, we might have different requirements. It's certainly possible to have different standards, you know, I don't know if they would be laxer or, or, you know, or, or maybe. More strict or who knows, but.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
So that, well, I als, I also think though, even whether they're, you know, parking lot like that, take them spaces or on the street. Um, whatever, uh, aesthetic requirements that we come up with, they should be pretty similar, if not the same.
Right, yeah.
So, um, that's all I have. Uh, does anyone else have anything they, they wanna add to what we've been talking about?
Yeah, um, I do. This is Dave Current. I had my hand up, by the way. You know, this is one of these things, the parklets, when it came to me, it said, oh, these are great ideas. They really worked out really well during the pandemic. But I'm now realizing that the law of uncon, uh, of unintended consequences is coming to play. And that is that when we allow businesses to, um, build these parklets out in the street. That's really a unfair giveaway of, of public, um, property to these businesses, even though they're paying the cost. They're not really compensating the, the public for those uses. And, um, that could have effect, like for instance, you mentioned the Bearclaw. What, what happens if the Bearclaw puts one of these out in San Pablo Avenue? Well, Tina's is competing with the Bearclaw. Tina's is paying for a large space to attract their customers where the Bearclaw. Is constrained and all of a sudden, uh, the Bearclaw would get this windfall of an area that they. Uh, put minimum investment in and I think that would be really unfair to, to like Tina's. If, if like the Bearclaw were to do, I'm just using that as an example. The other thing is that I know in Livermore, I think it was where they had parklets. The non-restaurant businesses were very much against them because they said, hey, our customers don't have a place to park and we're losing businesses. Um, and, um, so I think that, you know, that we have to be sensitive to the fact that, you know, taking away public parking spots. Is gonna impact businesses that are, that are not, that do not have the parklet. And the other thing too is this, this whole murky, uh, thing about ownership, you know, like for instance, let's take Sue's place, for instance. Um, what happens if a food truck decides to park next to Sue's, uh. Place and say, starts selling its own food, saying, oh, you can go sit in Sue's place because it's community property. What kind of, um, issues is that gonna cause? Is Sue's place gonna go like, hey, that's ours? But it's not. Um, you know, I, I just see so many questions of ownership, uh, and investment. Coming up where something that seems like a really great idea just has so many complications to it. That are far from being resolved. And I think that this worked out well during the pandemic. Restaurants needed these things during the pandemic. But now that we supposedly are, um, past that, I just think this is an idea that should just die. Um, because I think there's just, there's just too many issues. Um, that I think could be unresolved about how do you do, how do you handle the ownership aspect of this? And, and, and the responsibility and the control. Um, if, if they're community property, it's open for anybody and that's just gonna cause all kinds of problems. So that's my piece.
I think on that though, if, if they're paying for it, it's, it's their use. They're gonna, they'd be paying for the construction, they'd be paying some sort of.
But they're not buying the properties, Tim.
But they're gonna be paying a permit of some sort and they're gonna have to pay for a process to the city for that.
But they don't own it.
Well. I just don't, I, you know, if ever me, if, if it wasn't for my own excuse, this is my business, I wouldn't do it.
I mean, Alex, you can, you can maybe say this, who owns it?
Well, the, the public right of way belongs to the city, so the city can decide who can use it and. And for what purpose, you know, the, the city council could certainly decide that someone needs to pay rent. For, you know, an exclusive, uh, perm fee, or they could decide that, you know. The other benefits that may come from a parklet, uh, you know, justify it at, you know, no rent. That would really be a, uh, decision for the city council to decide. Um, but they could, they could structure it either way. I know, you know, cities have done it in both, both ways.
Okay. Yeah, okay. I guess no one else has any?
Uh, you've got two other people, two other commissioners that have their hands up. I think it was Rafael Menez and then Frankie Martinez.
I can't see any of this hand raising thing.
There you go. So Rafael, Rafael had his hand up a long time ago, so.
Great, thank you. And so I actually wanted to reply to your comments earlier with regards to the. Basically, traffic impacts of having the parklets on San Pablo Avenue and whether it would be worth the risk. I think it's worth considering these parklets. Not just within the tragedy of the commons context of whether or not they're public or private or quasi-public spaces. But also in terms of the impact they can have on traffic, because you have, if you have things like those signposts you see on the. In the top left image on that slide there, you have other things that make it stand out in traffic. I think that depending on the particular design of the parklet, it could potentially have a traffic calming effect. In ways that we couldn't ordinarily do on San Pablo Avenue in Old Town because it's a route of regional significance. So we can't do things like speed bumps and so on and so forth, but. Even at the most basic level, just a visual disruption of having something different there rather than just car, car, car. And then, oh wait, this is like completely different. It's going to draw the driver's attention to it. It's gonna make them slow down and react. Because they're seeing something different and they're adjusting to it. So I think it's worth considering in terms of land use, the potential transportation. Impact, though I don't wanna necessarily impinge on the transportation's committee's. Territory, but. I think in terms of land use planning, there's potential beneficial traffic calming impact that parklets could possibly have. If they're designed correctly, I think.
I absolutely agree with you. Um, I, I mean, in my dreamland, that would be. That would be something that would happen, right? That, that would be a way that we could slow traffic down. That we're not allowed to do it in any other way. Um, the question is, is one, if there's a real desire for that from the restaurants that are along there. Along San Pablo because it is so loud and two. Um, is, would we be able to get that past Caltrans? You know, something like that, the whole, you know. So I would almost even say, to say, kick this back to, to David Hannum. I mean, as far as San Pablo Avenue, if that would even be possible to ask, you know, Caltrans to work with there. But, you know, if we want to develop something that's just a three-pager and, you know. Gets the adjacent businesses sign-offs and all that kind of stuff, great. But I totally agree with you, um, Commissioner Menez. I just don't know if it's realistic at this point, so I appreciate, I appreciate your comment.
Well, there are a lot of cities that have San Pablo Avenue's in them, you know, Oakland, El Cerrito, Albany, that have parklets on, on the street. On San Pablo Avenue and it's still, it's the same, uh, street of regional significance there as it is here. In fact, it's busier. Um, so, uh, I think, I, I like, I appreciate what you said, Rafael. It may, you know, to me, that's. That makes sense in terms of what you're talking about. It's, you know, it's gonna be, there's a potential for the feel of what, you know, an area could be is, is there. So, um, who else had their hand up?
Frankie.
I did.
Thank you, Chair Ben Pelos. Um, I guess my pers, my perspective on this is, and. Going into the city quite a bit, right on Market Street, which is San, San Francisco's one of its busiest streets. Including, um, streets like Fillmore, they have parklets on every one of those major arteries. And with hundreds of thousands of cars going through those thoroughfares every single day, much more than what we have. And I, it's been my opinion also, I always get the sense that it does have that calming effect, cause you do slow down. You know, everybody's slowing down, not only looking for parking, but just the, the, the different lighting and that whole feel of it, if you will. So, I, yeah, I, I definitely have an, an interest in at least exploring this to see what the possibilities are. Maybe we, we decide that, you know, maybe it's not the right fit, but we, I, I think it's a good idea to at least look at it, would be my opinion. Thank you.
Uh, anyone else have anything more to add? Hearing done?
Uh, Chair, I don't, I don't believe there's any members of the public in attendance, but I, I don't know if we got any comments.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't have anything with me unless Justin's got something with him.
No, I don't see anyone online.
Yeah, I would be curious to see what, what the businesses thought of this and I would not just, not just in Old Town, but I would talk to people on Fitzgerald and, you know. Cause they're gonna have a whole different view of things, but I can see them, see them saying, oh yeah, we could put here in the parking lot if the, if the. Ownership would allow it, you know. Uh, I mean, they kind of do it now in some places out there, you know, they have just wide sidewalks and they put a couple of tables out there. You know, I'm sure they're just doing it and just no one said anything about it. So, uh, anyhow, uh, I guess you'll let us know. In terms of a ad hoc meeting, David and.
Yeah, I'll send out, I'll send out something, I'll send out some times, um, for next week.
Okay.
Um, cause I also have some other items for the ad hoc committee to look at as well, to development review oriented, so. Um, look, uh, I don't know what, I don't know, Thursdays are good days for, for, for everybody? Is that a pretty good day?
That'd be okay, that'd be okay for me.
Okay, so look for some Thursday days coming in your email, probably tomorrow. And then we'll get together.
Okay, that sounds good. Okay, um, moving on, we have. Okay, um, moving on, we have city planners and commissioners reports. David, you have anything?
Uh, I just have, I just have a couple of things um, that are going on. Uh, it looks like we're probably going to be getting uh, uh, tw- Apian Village to you guys on the 11th. That's, that's what we're going to have. Uh, and hopefully we'll have uh, 2801 Penole Valley Road to you guys by the end of April and then probably Penole Vista at the beginning of May. Um, so we're getting all, we're getting, we're getting all the reports in for all the studies, for all the projects. Uh, we're finalizing the stuff for Apian Way, getting that to, I'll be getting that staff report to Lily and Alex hopefully by the end of this week. Uh, so look for that one, Alex. And uh, um, and so there we are, we've gotten some inquiries. Just let the commissioner know, we've gotten more inquiries about more residential, more commercial businesses uh, along San Pablo, along uh, Penole Valley Road. So um, so yeah, so there's a lot of interest out there. We're getting a lot more inquiries about properties and what people can do on properties and the whole, what's the mixed use? You know, how does the mixed use components work? So we're getting a lot of that. Uh, we've got our first community meeting for our housing element uh, set slated for April 27. Um, so that's a, that's a community workshop. Uh, it looks like so, and so you'll get some more information later, probably uh, later this month uh, regarding that. So moving forward with those. Uh, we are, uh, who else? Um, Vista Woods is moving along slowly but surely, but they're moving. Um, and we've gotten some feedback on Penole Square, um, and they're moving forward on their, with their building permit package. So, and their final map package. So we're, we're looking forward to getting those things. Uh, getting those, getting those projects going again. So it looks like buildings are going to be hopping here in the next probably three to six months um, and uh, and, and beyond. And then from a planning perspective, as part of the housing element, we also are doing work on the safety element and the, and creating an environmental justice element. So the planning commission will be very much involved in those uh, and, and development of those as part of the housing element update. Um, and so other than that, that's all I have. Oh, I do have some updates from the last meeting uh, regarding this tree on, in front of the realty business. Uh, they are working on the grate. They've had issues with getting a grate uh, that's similar to what is uh, because I talked to Joe, similar of what's out on the rest of them. And so now it's a question of, do they just get that grate? Or do they wait until they get one made that's similar to the other grates that are along with the other trees? Um, and they're also working on an agreement between the the property owner and the city regarding uh, watering and uh, because you can't get water directly to it. So um, there are some agreements where, you know, the city would maintain it with them paying, paying for that. So there's an agreement that's being worked out on that um, for that project. And I think that's all I have. And I'm sure Anne will remind me of the other ones that I, I got updated on. So uh, that's all I have right now.
Yeah, I was going to ask you, has there been anything that we've approved that's made it to plan check yet? So it looks like there have been, so.
Yeah, I mean, the, the houses that you guys approved have all got a plan check. Vista Woods has gotten their plan checked. The only one that's, the only ones that's still, has their permit, the only one that's still out there uh, is um, is Penole Square, they're still out there. And there's a couple of minor CUPs that are out there that are, um, we're working with uh, the ones on 2307, 2337 San Pablo, uh, the outdoor market, uh, we're working with them. And um, and getting their, getting their stuff done, um, and they're moving forward. They, we finally, I think, got interested in the easement issue. There were some easements out there, city easements regarding some properties and stuff. And I think the public works director and that property, property uh, owner have gotten together and are finalizing those types of things. So, so yeah, so we're moving forward on those.
Have we made any progression on the uh, Old Town specific area plan and guidelines and whatnot?
I'm going to leave that with that, I'll leave that to Alex.
Yeah, so we have been looking into some issues about um, how SB nine applies in, in some other um, similar rules regarding uh, you know, streamlining housing and particularly non-objective standards. Um, until the extent they can be applied. Um, recently, just so everyone knows, you know, the attorney general, it was in different contexts, but they had sent a letter to Pasadena about how their um, their implementation of SB nine had, you know, and the way they were broadly classifying landmarks, districts was, was violating state law. Um, so we are just, I, it seems like this is a distinguishable situation. Um, because our, ours is pretty um, the intent was relatively relaxed. You know, they're not super strict requirements, but we just are, you know, have been firming that up and, and want to be confident in it before we bring that to the city council.
Okay. So they were saying in Pasadena that Pasadena said, oh, we're, we're a city full of landmarks and we can't do this.
Yeah, I mean, it was.
They are a city full of landmarks.
Yes, but they had um, in implementing SB nine, they had prohibited those um, SB nine projects within their landmarks districts. And like, like many districts, their landmarks districts included many historic structures, but because you don't establish the landmark district until, you know, recently or within the last, you know, 30 years, it's natural that there's a high percentage of the, the district that isn't historic in itself or have anything. And they had some, the legisla- the attorney general was expressing that that was, that was problematic. But it, as we looked more into it, seemed like it was really only as applied to their attempt to limit SB nine in those areas, which is not something we've attempted to do in our ordinance at all. So it, it should be fine.
Okay. Do you guys have anything else?
Um, yeah, I have a, a couple of things. Um, first of all, uh, actually a, a lot of them have been addressed, so I really appreciate that.
We're going to get it out by the way.
Yeah. Um, um, I do have a question regarding uh, the citizens to be heard from last meeting. Um, I guess it's Tony Vosbrink had brought up numerous concerns. And I was just wondering about the status of his requests, um, especially regarding the um, lighting on Penole Valley Road. Um, I'm not, I'm not worried about the, the creek um, or anything like that, but mostly about that lighting um, PG&E. Were you able to follow up on that at all with?
Yeah, the PG&E, that's, that's something that they're working on. They, they've had a lot of issues with transformers down there. Uh, and so they're working on trying to get a better delivery system down there. And so it's taking a little longer than it should. Um, they're supposed to be done with their work here in the next couple of weeks. So hopefully everything starts going, getting quote, back to normal the way it was supposed to be. Um, but I do have a email into Jamie already, she's our public works analyst uh, and inspector. And so I'll be, I'll meet with her tomorrow and get a final, a finalization of where they're at. When I talked to her last month after our meeting, she wasn't sure how long, they, she thought it was going to take them three to four weeks um, to finish all that, but uh, but I'll follow up with her to see if that's still consistent. Because they should be, that should almost be done, all that information.
That's, that's good. So I hope that um, Mr. Vosbrink and his neighbors can, can see that. And I really appreciate you following up on that. So, so thank you. Um, I'm also wondering, um, Chair Bonuelos, we had spoken quite a long time ago about the possibility of um, our discussing and asking Mr. Hannum to put items on the agenda for future agendas. And I was wondering if there was still um, you know, the desire for, for us to, to be able to do that as a commission.
Yeah, I think so. This would be the, the, the point in our meeting that we would do it. If anyone hadn't, had seen something or had an idea or, uh, you know, the, where, where, where we are right now is when we, when we would do it. It's very similar to how the city council does it.
Okay, actually they moved theirs, I think, to um, the very core part of the, the meeting. So it used to be at the end, but then they changed it. So I'm not, I'm not sure about that. So um, is there anything that we need to do then as far as if we're, we'd like to request um, items to go on the agenda? Um, just that we need to be in agreement within our commission and then pass that on to Mr. Hannum? Or is there anything else?
We, we will double check um, the planning commission's bylaws and, and make sure nothing there has to be changed. Uh, we may need at the next meeting to bring back, you know, for approval, a change to the planning commission's agenda format, since it, it should really be a um, a specific thing. Um, eh, and um, the normal process would be um, you know, for, it would take a majority of the planning commission um, to uh, to, you know, add something to a future agenda item. And, and I would just add, you know, I think this is something that um, Dave will probably, depending on the item, you know, um, need to still run by the um, by Lily and, and the city manager just because um, you know, they and/or the council may, and not to say this is the items that you'd be asking for, but may, you know, not want the city, you know, staff to be spending, you know, time and resources on certain items. Um, like that, so.
Yeah, I would always, I would, I would take that. So if you have items that you want, I would take those to Lily and to, and let her know that this is what the planning commission wants to put on their agenda and this is what's, and give her an idea of what timelines, timelines are going to be and, and that, so. Um, but yeah, we, we definitely do that.
Would it make a difference whether it was something that we have to vote on versus like a discussion of something? Would they be the same in terms of the process?
No, I, I think if it's something that, if it's just, just a discussion item, I don't think that, I mean, I would just take it to Lily and say, look, the planning commission wants to discuss this at their next meeting, yada, 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 whether it's an ordinance or whether it's, they just want to take a look at, you know, a specific part of the code, a part of the general plan, you know, something of that nature. Or whether you want to really, you know, uh, if, if you want to do some real changes uh, in, in, in any of the documents that we have or do something of that nature, then. Um, so it would be kind of a different process, but.
Okay.
So, that's, that's great. I just know that, you know, we had brought it up before and I just wanted to make sure that um, we, we do see, you know, and, and I don't even have anything in particular in mind. But um, I just want to make sure that we do have the avenue to do that. Um, especially as we're getting, you know, all of these um, developments coming up and, and such. There might be some specific things, so. Um, okay, and another thing that we had, we've talked about many times is having a joint um, planning commission, uh, city council meeting. And I know that the city council has also brought that up. Um, there are things that um, we think about with developments happening, concern for safety. Um, things that we've talked about in terms of um, Vista Woods. Uh, you know, their safety for seniors and things like that, that we need to be thinking about in the broader, in the broader sense that the city council would obviously have jurisdiction on that. So I was wondering what the status was of um.
Well, I know, I know Lily, Lily and Andrew have been talking about that. Um, and there, I think we are, I think we're potentially scheduling a joint meeting with, for the housing element. So there might be something, I'll have to check with Lily on that to see if there is a, if, if there, uh, if there are other, if we can put other things on that agenda or for discussion points or something of that nature. But I know, I know they've been talking about it. I just don't, I just don't know what the final outcome of that has been.
Okay, okay. All right, um, just so, so long as we will hopefully have that happen. Um, and I just had a question. You mentioned the outdoor market. Is that the one on San Pablo Avenue near Tennen that like?
Yeah, the one next door to it.
We approved and?
Yeah, Raquel Contreras' property.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that's what, that's what I was talking about earlier.
Okay. Whoa, okay, coming back, right? Um, let's see, I think that's it. Um, just wondering about the status of the Sprouts trees and where those might go and such like that. Just, just to make sure that we don't lose that.
No, I'm, I'm working with the developer right now. Some of the agreements that Tamara made before she left with the developer, we're working on basically expanding the landscaping of the median. And that's kind of where all that, where all of that extra quote mitigation is going to. It's what, we're going to go back and redo or refurbish the, the median. Um, and then they are going to do the, the park bench part on the, by the creek or some type of bench or place where somebody can sit down. Uh, we talked about doing stone and other types of materials. So I'm working because, because there's a bond on that, probably there's a bond on all that. So the developer wants to get rid of the bond. So we're kind of holding the bond hostage until we get what we need out of the, out of the developer. So um, I had some, I had some estimates for the landscaping in the median. And so uh, I'm getting those estimates to them. And once we agree upon that, then you'll start seeing movement in, in the median.
That's great. Okay, that's, that's good to hear. I think um, all of my other questions and thoughts like that have been addressed, so I appreciate your patience. Thank you.
No problem. I, before Tim, before you go to the next commissioner, I do want to bring up, one thing I forgot to bring up is that I have been working with the owners of the bowling alley. And based off of the planning ad hoc committee comments regarding the, the colors of the building, uh, we have pretty much come to, we worked with them, I worked with them on the color scheme of um, Gateway. And so we're, we've come up with a color palette for the, for the bowling alley that will be consistent with, with the color scheme of the, of the um, Gateway Plaza, Gateway Center, so.
Sounds pretty disappointing.
Huh?
The whole place is going to look like sherbet, huh?
Well, no, I mean, they're, they're going to do, I think their design is going to be a little more different based on what they, on face of what they lap presented. I think there's going to be a little more, a little more bold, a little more, uh, but it'll be within the color schemes that, that, it'll be within the colors that, that are within the Gateway Center.
Oh, okay. Because, you know, I think that's all pretty awful, actually.
Yeah, so. I know the ad hoc committee, they wanted it to be, I know the ad hoc committee wanted to be consistent with that. So that's what we're, that's, that's what we're headed with, so.
All right. Um, does anyone else have any communications they want to add?
Yeah, I have something real quick. Uh, this is Dave Current. Um, uh, I believe that the um, officers of the planning commission's terms are expiring in April. Uh, so I think it's uh, it's important for David to put uh, um, on either the 11th agenda or later uh, about um, the appointment of the chair and vice chair in the, in the standing committee.
Yep, yeah, we will be. So that, yeah, that's, that's coming, that's on our, that'll be on our, probably it'll be on the meeting on the 25th. So uh, yeah, no, I, I got that dialed in.
Great, I have.
Um, is there anyone who's uh, terming out?
Uh, Simon, I think Simon is uh, in the process of, of terming out. Um, and I think he's the only one. I think Dave is next year.
Yeah.
I'll just, a couple of you next year. Uh, so I will, I will be, I, you'll, you'll be getting that as part of the staff report in your next, the next meeting, so.
Great, thanks.
Mr. Current.
This Commissioner Metz, I just had a brief comment about uh, last year Moriarty's points about having additional items added on to the agenda. I just note that if we're going to be adding on additional items to the agenda, we should consider the overall net time that we have available, because we're going to have a whole bunch of stuff coming up before us over the next few months. The major projects that I've already mentioned and above and beyond that, the housing element, the safety element and the environmental justice element, I imagine, are all going to take significant amounts of time and probably multiple meetings each. So we should consider sort of our time limits when considering what items we want to add to the agenda. Because I know that at the city council level, at one point, they were going back over their agenda items the council had suggested and sort of categorizing them and classifying all of them. I think there was something on the order of 35 items that hadn't been assigned yet, but the council had to go over and locate within their agenda. And our focus is obviously more narrow, but I think it's something we should consider as well, sort of our limits.
Well, keep in mind that just because we bring that up, it's not going to happen the next meeting. I mean, there are things that are months and months ahead of time, most likely. Especially like you said, with our load that we're going to have.
Absolutely true, absolutely true. But what we need to do is we need to make sure that the process allows us to do that. Because um, in the, in the essence, and we are, we do represent the. the um, the citizens of Pinole. And so there needs to be a, a way for, for us to, you know, within the confines of what the system is, to be able to make sure that if there are things that come up that are addressed, that, that, that we can do. But it's, it's all dependent upon the commission agreeing to do that, obviously with the majority. And we'll leave it to Mr. Hannum and Mr. Mog to figure out what the, the um, the legality of that is and how that goes. So there's, there's, like I said, I don't have anything on the agenda or anything on my plate that I'm thinking of. I just want to make sure that we have the process available to us.
Okay.
And I'm not saying that having the process available to us is a bad thing. I'm just saying we should be wary about how we use it once it exists.
That's not that hard. So, all right, um, is that it? Anybody have anything else? Hearing, hearing done? Our, our, this is the end of the meeting. Our next meeting, which I'm hearing may be on the premises, this might, this may be our last noon meeting.
Yeah, I, that, that's just one thing I forgot to ask before you adjourned. We will be having a hybrid meeting next month, so do expect to come back into the chambers. Uh, I'll be working with Heather, Justin and I will be working with Heather to make that, make that work. So, but um, and uh, so you'll be getting more information over the next couple of weeks of how this is all going to work, so.
Okay, that sounds good. And that meeting's going to be, right now it's scheduled for April 11th?
April 11th.
Twenty-two at seven PM. And with that, I adjourn the meeting.
Great, good night, everyone.
Good night, everybody.
Night.
Thanks.
Good night.